Good evening. I called to order the June meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission and I want to thank everyone out here tonight that's participating. We're running a little late, but we'll make up for it. The first item on the agenda is the invocation. I'm going to call, ask Mr. Keith to handle that for us.
Let us pray. Gracious in heaven, Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for allowing us to see another day. God, we thank you for your grace and we thank you for your mercy. We ask that you will come and be with us now throughout this meeting. Lead us, guide us, and direct us. Have us to do your will. And, Father, we ask that you will keep the family of Bryant, Moses, and his family as they have lost a family member. Keep them in your care. Protect them. Strengthen them in every leaning side. And all these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Keith and Mr. Moses. I'm sorry to hear of you alls. I'd like to take a minute. I wish we had a larger crowd than all the commissioners here, but this wonderful lady to my left, Ms. Moses, this will be her last night as a commissioner. She has served on this commission since 1989. And by far, I think that the chairman and co-chairman, through the years, she has taught them everything they know. So I would normally ask for a stand-up applause, but I think she would not be comfortable with that, but we just thank her for her service. She's been amazing. I told her she's been the voice of reason on this commission. She keeps everything in her lane when sometimes we might get emotional or the crowd get emotional. She was always that voice, that voice that just kind of calmed everyone down and put things into perspective. And she kept us within the guardrail. So, Ms. Moses, thank you.
Ms. Hines.
You're Mr. Moses. Did I even say something? Did I say Moses the first time too?
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
You meant Hines on your mind.
I was wondering why she was kicking me under the desk right there. Oh, wow. Please don't put that in the minutes. Yeah, okay. Great, thank you. But, Ms. Hines, thank you so much. You're like a sister and a mother to all of us. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from our special call meeting from last month.
Will be approved.
Is there any discussion? Is there any changes or?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Are there any discussions or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And like signs may and ayes have it. All right. Item PC 2035-15. This is a request to rezonate a parcel located at 619 South Church Street. Staff report, please.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And good evening.
Good evening. All right, this is 619 South Church Street. This is a vacant lot. It is currently zoned Activity Center, which is mixed use outside of the Central Business District, and the applicant is requesting NC 6.3 zoning to construct a single-family home. Future land use does show industrial, but it is sandwiched between neighborhood conservation, residential auto-urban. There are single-family homes on this road. There are multifamily. There is some leftover industrial sort of car storage on some vacant lots. So there is a mix of uses along this corridor. All right, so a survey provided by the applicant, Mr. Myron Hires, on behalf of Mildred Hires Multro. He submitted this survey sketch to us. There is a home adjacent to the south at 619, or 621?
621.
621, thank you. 621 South Church Street that actually encroaches two feet onto this vacant parcel. So the applicant did provide this to us. The encroachment will not change the required setback if Planning Commission does vote to recommend rezoning to City Council. They may just have to shift a little further over so that they don't have to meet certain building codes for fire safety. The lot does meet the NC 6.3 standards for the 50-foot lot width and the 6,000-square-foot lot area. Here's some site photos showing the vacant lot and also the home that encroaches two feet onto 619 South Church Street. So the AC zoning district for residential, single-family detached, which is the applicant's wish to construct, is not permitted currently. Some of the commercial uses that are permitted in the AC zoning district, alcohol beverage sales, on-site consumption, light automobile repair, you could do a restaurant with no drive-through. Institutionally, you could do a church, a school. Obviously, anything done would be limited by the lot size and lot width. If Planning Commission recommends the NC 6.3, does permit single-family detached townhomes, duplex, multiplex, multifamily. For commercial, it only permits home occupations, and again, institutional, church, school, outdoor recreation. But any of the residential uses beyond single-family detached would be very difficult due to the width of the lot and the lot area. So that is the applicant's request to rezone from AC to NC 6.3. That does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none. We'll go into the public hearing portion of this. The next item on the agenda has a public hearing as well. And I will ask that when I do open the hearing, if you would like to speak on behalf or against this request, I'd like you to come to the podium, give us your name, and address your conversation to the commissioners and not the audience. And I'll start with anybody that is against this request. Hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this request? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come forward. Your name, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Richard Dean Gibson, and I am the owner of the property that encroaches on the lot, that encroaches on the lot 621, South Church Street. And I don't have clearance because he wouldn't give me, let me buy the two feet, or he wouldn't sell me or whatever. So that is my concern, really. What can you do to resolve this matter where? Because I don't have title.
Okay, so are you in favor of this request or against?
No.
I just have general questions.
I'm selling the property and I've spent a lot of money on it, and I'm selling them, so I'm not in favor, really, of rezoning it just for that, because all around me is being sold, actually.
Okay, so, Ms. Gibson, and thank you for coming forward. What you're saying is because of the encroachment and you do not have a clear title, you live in the house that is on?
No, there are two houses on one lot. There should be two lots, but because of the encroachment on his side, they can't get it cleared on that side.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So it's like it's only one lot. So would I have to push my house down or whatever, or not be paid properly for two houses I've spent so much money on?
Mr. Moore, could you address this for us, please?
Now, do you own the house or you own the lot?
I own both of them, all two houses.
But you're selling the empty lot, is that right?
No, I don't own the empty lot. The empty lot is where my house encroaches on. My house is two feet.
Okay, you own the house, not the?
Not the empty lot.
You own these two houses?
Yeah, those two houses, but that is encroaching on the?
That's right.
Yeah, totally.
So the, this case is, would not address, obviously, it's only addressing the rezoning of the property. Anything that would, any title that needs clarification for sale or anything like that, that would need to occur between her and the property owner, and that's something that you will, you will need to speak with an attorney about.
Okay, because they wouldn't do anything, so I was wondering if it can go to court or what?
Yeah, you'll, we can't provide any recommendations on how you can best move forward. That's something that you'll, you'll need to talk, speak with an attorney.
Okay.
So our request tonight, is this something that we need to move forward or postpone it to the next month?
The, with the two-foot encroachment, this, this would cause issues for the applicant as well, as they go to get a construction loan or anything of that nature to move forward. So I think that is, the applicant's not here.
Right, and if the applicant were to sell the two feet, they would not meet the minimum lot widths required.
Sounds like a conundrum.
A little bit of a rock and hard place.
Yeah.
But our decision as the commission?
It's only to do with the zoning.
Right. Whether we, whether we leave it like it is or whether we vote to change it, that won't make any difference about two feet.
No, and what, what potential path forward if this commission finds it reasonable to approve or recommend the request as submitted, that is something that we can continue to work with the property owner on getting clarification before a final decision is made at council. So we can defer that after with council or at this time as well.
Excuse me just a minute.
Yeah, Mr. Moore.
Before any further. When I'm looking at the place that, I hate to say that, but my property's right there, and I think I shouldn't have a say-so of what's going on.
Oh, you're going to recuse.
Yeah.
I think you brought that up before and you recused yourself.
Because I live at 705.
Is that the adjacent vacant lot?
It's, the lot that she's talking about is in between, where is it at? Where is it, where am I? It's on the south side of her lot, am I right?
Yes.
I told you, Mr. Furman.
Yes, you can say yes.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
The?
I'm on the, I'm on the south side of there.
Where's the survey? Yeah, we will also need an official survey. You'll need to complete an official survey. This is a sketch, it's not a stamp survey from a, from the surveyor, so we'll need clarification on that as well.
I would like advice from staff. If Mr. Moses recuses himself, we no longer have a quorum. Can we go forward with, and I do think he probably needs to recuse himself.
Yeah, because I live at 705, which is three houses, two houses down, am I right?
Yeah.
Two houses down, because you're talking about, there's no other house, you're talking about the house in between there, and then my house is next door. The lot, would you keep the cars there?
Yeah.
That, I'm next door to, would you keep the cars there? In the two-story house there? That's where I'm, that's where I'm at.
So, Mr. Moore, as far as Robert's rules, if he recuses, we no longer have a quorum. Can we even vote?
I believe it would need to be deferred until next month's meeting to have a full quorum for voting.
Mr. Moses, I'm going to ask you not to participate in the vote to defer, but I appreciate you coming forward with that information.
Yeah, can we vote?
No.
No?
We can vote to defer. Can we vote to defer?
No.
What we will? It's automatically deferred.
Yeah, this will, we will automatically postpone this to the following month's meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Moses?
At that time, we will?
Mr. Howes?
We'll additionally work with the applicant to get further clarification.
All right, Ms. Gibson, thank you for coming forward. All right, so that is officially deferred until next month, and staff will work to see if we can get through this issue. The next item on the agenda is PC 2023-16. This is a request to rezonate two parcels located at 235 East House Springs Road. Ms. Lane, good evening.
Good evening.
Staff report, please.
All right. The, these two parcels are at the corner of Redbud Lane, right by the city firehouse, and East House Springs Road, so just down from South Florence High School, just across from the bluffs at Mill Creek, which is being constructed now. It is zoned, or it's surrounded by property that is not in the city limits. As you can see, it's a little bit hit and miss there. And it is zoned campus right now, which allows institutional uses largely, with NC 6.3 across the street, and that is the requested zoning, similar to the last case, in order to put residential uses, because you cannot put residential uses at campus. And the future land use map does label it as neighborhood conservation as well. These are the table of the uses that can be done in campus, and there are a variety of commercial uses, but single-family houses or any kind of residential use is not one of them. And the applicants don't have a specific use proposed yet, but they have suggested that they might be interested in doing some kind of multifamily. And that's the purpose for providing those two lots and rezoning it to the NC 6.3. So that concludes staff's report.
Ms. Lane, the surrounding properties are campus 6.3 R1, which is in the county. That's single-family?
That's correct.
Okay. Then you've got campus again, which is vacant land, and this is on the R1, which would be equivalent to our old R1 in the city. Is that correct?
That's right. So the property immediately across the street there is, yeah, most of the stuff in the county is R1 and would be for large, single-family lots.
Commissioners, questions?
The adjacent properties are uncolored in the county, is that?
That's correct, yes.
Correct. And the, what is the greenish?
That's a planned development, and I believe those are multifamily.
So you don't show multifamily on the surrounding, and it does touch? No, it doesn't. I'm sorry, it doesn't touch those two parcels. The PD?
Right, the PD, I believe that is like some duplexes or that kind of a thing. The yellow across the street is zoned NC 6.3, which does permit multifamily, but it's not being used in that way. It's a single-family house right now.
The blue is in the city?
That's correct. Anything colored on there is in the city.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Say what the campus allows again.
It permits things like assisted living, or not, not assisted, a hospital, public assembly like churches or schools or daycares, recreational uses, and hotels, commercial retail, personal services, and then office space. But those are generally on larger parcels as well.
None of those uses are in that area currently?
Correct. Short of the fire station and the school.
Put that back up, I didn't catch the fire station.
The fire station's immediately north of it. That's the city fire station on Redbud, and then?
Colored by, how is that colored?
That's the turquoise.
Turquoise.
The campus.
Yeah.
And then on the southwest side, the campus, that's the school, south side in South Florence.
So if the applicant, is it a red flag that he's thinking multifamily? If he wanted to do single-family? Or if he wanted to do a duplex? Duplex and multifamily fall in the same?
Those would both be permitted under the NC 6.3 if he met the lot, minimum lot standards.
Okay. Is that what he indicated? Or did he indicate?
Not really. Just it suggested they would want to do possibly multifamily, but they just want to do something residential, which they cannot do under the campus.
The applicant is here tonight, and I hope he'll be able to come forward. Any other questions, and we'll open the public hearing, and we can ask questions. All right, public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak against this request, this sound in the public, you're welcome to come forward. Seeing no one, if anyone would like to come forward, please, or speak in favor of, and give us your name, please, sir.
I think?
What's your name, sir?
I'm sorry?
What's your name?
Michael Winston. Very good. When we first made applicant for to change the rezoning, I know, we don't know exactly what we want to do there, other than we do know we want to put multifamily there. Do we want to max out the property? And I think we talked about that, you know, it's really not designed where we could build a ton of apartments there, but the way the owner, the way the potential buyer wants to buy this property, he would want to put multifamily there. But we would not want to come in there and just max out that. That's just, you know, not what we want to do.
Okay, commissioners, questions?
What do you want to do?
Multifamily, you know?
Two, three?
More like townhouses.
Two, three?
You know, I can't remember, can you tell me, how many, you know, when we look at the size, exactly, what were we talking about?
Oh, I can't remember how many units.
How many families or how many units? I think we probably, it was a unit. Was it in the 60s?
No, no.
You couldn't get 16 on that?
No, I couldn't.
Yeah, I want to say it was more like 10 or 15 at the max.
Okay.
Maybe not even that many.
1,500, 15 square feet.
That's, that's what it is, yeah.
It's two lots, right?
It is, yep, it is two lots.
And they're like three-quarters of an acre together, I think it was.
What does staff think about putting multifamily against single-family? Is that, maybe it's the commissioners that should address that.
I think it is, I think staff could certainly recommend a rezoning. The concern with, with NC 6.3 is the transition that occurs between the large lot, single-family that establishes the character, between that and the school along House Springs, and then making that transition to a higher, much higher density residential development directly adjacent to that. So that is, is staff's largest concern, just the abrupt change in the character along the corridor.
I've got a question. You know, when you come up and tell us that you don't know what you're going to put there?
Well, yes, sir, I understand.
Yeah, you know, that throws a red flag up to me.
Yes, sir, I understand that. It's not what we want to put there. We definitely want to put multifamily there, but the number, you know, because we haven't had a design by civil engineer to see what we can put there, or we haven't gone through zoning to do that. I mean, nobody wants to spend the money to do the design unless we know we can do the project. I mean, so?
And I just, I just did the math, and at the 1,500 requirement, I believe it was about three-quarters of an acre together, the very maximum would be 20 units. And you would have to provide buffer and parking and all of that as well. So it'd be much lower than that, practically speaking.
I don't see us putting that many there. I mean, we could, we could bring the design back and show the council what we propose to put there, you know, we could do something crude, but I don't think that, you know, if we have a chance of it being resolved, then, you know, we'll, we'll take, we'll do our due diligence and move forward with it and bring the design back. And I could tell you how many units we wouldn't propose to put there, sir.
Mr. Winston, I appreciate that offer, because it is very difficult for this commission to vote on something that we don't have enough answers. And I appreciate you coming forward. If you, if there's nothing else you'd like to say, you're welcome to have a seat.
Has the, has the property been acquired or you?
That's what we're doing, the, the potential buyer, we're doing the due diligence right now.
So it hasn't been purchased yet?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of us? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
I, to me, I would let him come back and come up with a sketch plan, a purpose, how he was going to put there, and all, because if we go ahead and rezonate, we don't know what he's going to put there. If he had a sketch plan and all stuff, this is what I plan to put there, I'd be more than, I'd like to deny it now.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'd make a motion if we denied it.
Would you consider deferring?
Until, until the applicant come up with a sketch plan and a purpose, and what the purpose you could put on that particular piece of lot.
To defer?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think if we deny it, he has a period of time that he has to wait before he can reapply?
Six months.
He has to wait six months if we deny?
If you?
Who would vote to defer?
If the commission does not recommend the rezoning, it will still go to council, at which I would imagine council will follow Planning Commission's recommendation, then it would be six months before the applicant could reapply for that.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Moses?
I'd make a motion if we defer.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second to defer until the next month. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs may and ayes have it. All right, the last item on the agenda is a sketch plan review. And, Mr. Johnston?
Thank you, everyone. So this is Magnolia Farms, phases three through five. So here's a vicinity map. It is off of Hoffmeyer Road, getting into, parts of it are actually Darlington County. That is zoned RG3. So here's a proposed phasing, phasing map. So last, let's see, phases one and two were approved at the February meeting. And if you look at the north arrow, the phases one and two are to the east, and then the red arrow shows phases three, phases four, and phases five, which is what we will be looking at tonight. So total, they're looking at, D. Harden is looking at 14 phases totaling about 879 lots, and they are requesting sketch plan approval tonight for phases three through five. They did execute a summary plat May 31st to acquire tract one from the owner. So that did change the TAC map numbers from what is shown. This is, this is no longer the property lines, but this is now, this is the new property line. So to the south, there's tract one, and then there's the remainder parcel. So everything we'll be talking about tonight will be in that remainder parcel. So it is zoned RG3. Each lot will have to be 60-foot lot width, 6,000 square feet in an area. It will have a city, water and sewer. We checked out the street names proposed, and they were accepted, acceptable based on current E911 street names. They don't, street names sounding like other street names in case of an emergency, and those all check out. And the revised sketch plan that we received does, is in compliance with Unified Development Ordinance. So this is total, phases three through five. Phase three, 57 lots. Phase three, 57 lots. Phase four, 47 lots. Phase five, 51 lots. So tonight, we're looking at 155 lots total. So here's phase three. This will be 25 acres, 57 lots. Phase four, 47 lots over 16 acres, and phase five, 51 lots over about 14 acres. And they do all have to meet the setbacks, 20 feet in the front, five on the side. For corner lots, 10 feet on the street side and 20 feet in the rear. And that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. I noticed there are some minor discrepancies with United Unified Development Ordinance, got to put my glasses on. Has that been cured, or is that in the works?
Those, we got the revisions back for those, and staff is satisfied that it meets the Unified Development Ordinance. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. We do not have a public hearing for this, so I'll ask the commissioners if they have any questions of staff regarding approving this sketch plan.
There are no exceptions.
They are not asking for any variances, no, sir.
Have you got clearance for Darlington County also?
We're not there yet, yes, sir, but we are joint mission, working on, you know, emergency protection, property taxes, those are all things that are getting ironed out.
Any other questions?
As there are no variances, I recommend approval.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs may, if she announced. All right, thank you, Mr. Johnston. That will conclude our meeting tonight. Is there any old or new business, Mr. Moore, other than Ms. Heinz's regretful departure? Okay. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion if you do.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote curies. Thank you all, just for tonight.